Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the January 26, 2015 workshop, the Oshkosh Common Council. The focus of the workshop tonight is on really a kind of placement of sex offenders within the city of Oshkosh. I think what we want to do here is get some additional information regarding whether or not the council may want to look into additional ordinance as the case may be, but more than anything else, I think tonight we want to see what the alternatives are, both in terms of pros and cons, and what the legal alternatives are, because we're constrained by my state as we go along with respect to this. So, we're going to have a discussion about that, kind of looking at what the options are, what the issues are, pros, cons, and legality of various issues, and then we'll decide afterward where we might go with it. So, I'm going to start off with the city manager first.
Thank you.
Start.
Yeah, I'll start just very briefly, and it's going to be a combination of Chief Groyle, City Attorney Lawrence, and myself to just give you an overview. The agenda, we're going to talk about current enforcement, because we think it's important to understand that what we're currently doing, that we're not necessarily required by any city ordinance, but best practices, what police department do, how they enforce things, and really identifying as we look at options for ordinances, things that we're already doing that we would continue to do, or maybe do differently, but just to give you an idea of that. The bulk of our, these bullets are not weighted. The second bullet point is really what we're going to spend the vast majority of our time on. Types of sex offender ordinances that are out there based on our research, different things we found out, just do a little bit of policy analysis, pros and cons types of things, and then questions and discussions, and you know, kind of where do we go from here with the council? I know that council members had asked about, well, you know, when do we take this to the public? Even though this is a public meeting, this is really just a workshop, you know, if the council wanted to consider an ordinance change, how we go about that certainly up to council, but what I, what we heard was that you'd want to, you know, basically take it on the road, as it were, and let the public be aware of it and get feedback before anything is done finally. But tonight, we're going to really give you a broad overview of the different things we're doing here. So, with that, I'm going to turn over to Chief Groyle, who's going to talk about current police enforcement, and I've warned him to watch acronyms, acronym alert. If you see a letter, three or four letters together that you don't understand, you are welcome to interrupt him mid-sentence and ask him, because there's a lot of them out there, and we have one on the first, on the next slide. So, Chief, I'll let you take it over.
Well, the first thing I do want to say is, I think what we are doing is the best practices as it relates to sex offender management. You look at what's happening around the country, many of the things that they say you should be doing, we're doing. And we've got a really good working relationship with our partners in, and collaborative agencies in the sex offender management that we do. We've got a great working relationship with Department of Corrections, the probation and parole people, the sex offender registry people. We're in constant communication with them and sharing information, and you know, from a victim-centered approach with Reach Counseling. So, I think we do a really, really good job of those things right now, and I think the Department of Corrections people would, would confirm that. There's constant communication at the street level. So, the first acronym up there is the SPNs. Those are, those are special bulletin notifications. And that's oftentimes how we first become aware of what might be considered more of a high-risk offender. To qualify as an SPN, these are notifications given to law enforcement by the Department of Corrections. And so, the law requires an SPN for all individuals committed under Chapter 980, which is the violent, sexually violent persons, or those that are two strikes, that have committed two sex offenses that qualify under this, under the statutes, and these people are being released from prison. And so, we'll get what's called an SPN, a special bulletin notice. And what we do then, those notices have a lot of information on it. It has the date that the offender is coming out of prison. Sometimes it has an address that they might be going to, and we'll talk a little bit about that. It has a description of the person with a photograph, the characteristics of the person, height, weight, all those kinds of things. In a minute, I'll pass around a sample of what we do with those SPNs. And then it has information about the offense that they committed, and that's, that's general information that comes out to law enforcement. And we use that then to review what kind of notification we are going to be doing. So, the whole purpose of an SPN is to notify law enforcement, so that law enforcement can decide what kind of a notification, if any, we're going to go, we're going to do to the community. And it's completely discretionary. I'll just pass around one sample of one that we did last year. So, you can kind of see, there's a cover sheet to it. This particular one was in April. And then we take a lot of the information that's on the SPN and put it in this flyer that goes out to the community in some fashion. So, what we do, so what we do then is we pull together a core team. That's just a name given to, it's not an acronym. That's why when we were briefing for this, I couldn't think of what it meant, because it doesn't mean anything. It's just a, it's just a core team of people that get together, and it's, it's district attorney representatives from the district attorney's office, law enforcement representation. In the case of an SPN that we would get, it would be City of Oshkosh Police and the Sheriff's Office, and then representatives from probation and parole, supervisors from probation and parole, and the sex offender registry people. And we all get together, and we have one scheduled for this Wednesday afternoon, we're meeting on an offender that's, that's coming out, and we sit and discuss the offense and how the person responded to treatment while incarcerated, and all the factors that would help us decide what, if any, level of notification we're going to do to the community. And so, the notifications can be anything from just a media release to flyers, and if it's a flyer, it's going to be exactly what you're looking at. We'll go to a targeted area. If it's near a school, or daycare, or something like that, we'll, we'll give those targeted flyers to there. Otherwise, we'll just blanket a neighborhood, go a couple of blocks either way of where the house is, and we'll distribute those flyers and have an opportunity to talk to the residents that were handing those flyers out. If it's a, and that's generally what we do on most. It would be a media release and flyers distributed, and extra attention given to areas, you know, that, that we think, you know, should, we should make sure that they're aware of it. We also may do what is called the Level 3 notification, and that's if we think that there's a likelihood that the offender will reoffend, or there's some particular sensitivity from the victim's standpoint, we may hold a community meeting. Now, last, last year, we did nine SPN notifications, and we did community meetings for two of those. And we actually held a community meeting at the same night, because two offenders were coming out at the same time, and they both were kind of a high level. So, at the meeting, we just, it's really open to the community, but we, we try and get the neighborhood where the released person is going to come to the meeting, and they're not.
Can you back up just for a second? When you talked about notifying, kind of like a broad, two neighborhood area, how do we notify, or do we specifically talk to, like, the school district, proche, private, I mean, public daycares?
If there's a school in the area, we'll notify the school and the staff there, we'll notify the district office, and, and you know, we've, we've done daycare centers and things. Even though it's contrary to what we know in the data, we still make those notifications. And then at the meeting, we will discuss very specifically. Now, unfortunately, those meetings are not well-attended by the community. And we generally record those on OCMS, so they play on a loop, and so those meetings and the information presented will, will, will be able to be viewed, you know, periodically by the community anyway. And there's really good information from the Sex Offender Registry, from Reach Counseling, and it's, you know, good personal safety kinds of things, and specifics about the offender and the registry program, and all those kinds of things. So, it's just helpful in a very high-profile release to do that with the community.
Got Reach Counseling, just in case everybody's not aware of Reach Counseling. I'm not sure if they are, so if you could just...
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're centered around helping victims of sexual assault and domestic violence, mostly sexual assault, and they work very closely with us. Anytime we investigate a sexual assault, we'll call in a counselor to help us through that investigation. So, we work very closely with Reach, and so that's, they're mainly centered on the victim, as we are. And so, the purpose of the core meeting, determine the level of community notification, if any. We will, by, by policy, my personal policy, make notification, most times, just because we feel that that's important to do, and transparency, and letting the community know. But, so last year, we've done nine SPNs. So, I know there's sometimes a perception that, that more have been released, but that's how many we've done.
Is that, is that typical then to, to other years?
Ah, it's pretty, pretty typical, I think, yeah. It's pretty typical. We've got one that we are reviewing Wednesday, that we'll be making notifications. And so, it's generally one and a half, or one, or not, every month and a half, something like that. With all offenders, sex offenders that are released that are on supervision, we also do a face-to-face interview. So, the captain of the Investigative Services Bureau will be contacted by the offender. Part of the rules, when they come out, that when they're on supervision, is they have to meet with law enforcement. So, we do an actual face-to-face meeting with them, and it's a pretty, pretty comprehensive questionnaire that we have them fill out. I'll pass around a sample that we do as well. We ask them a lot of information, personal history information, you know, their education status, where they're going to work, relatives, close friends, places they may hang out, you know, known churches, where they shop, all those kinds of things that we would be interested in knowing about offenders that are being released into, into the community. So, that is generally done upon, upon their release. What we do with that information then is we, the captain will put together a summary of that, of that interview, and it gets disseminated throughout the organization, so all the officers know there's a photo of them, will know where the offender's living, those kinds of things. And so, it creates a general awareness with all of our officers who just got released, and where they, and where they're going to be living.
Do you generally get good response or thoroughness with this?
Yeah.
Are they mandated to do it?
Mandated for those that are on supervision. It's a very good interview, they're very open, very cooperative, we take their photograph, and the only other time that we would then see that person in this kind of an interview is if they were moving to another jurisdiction, they would be required to tell us that. Otherwise, the other efforts that we do to maintain that database would, would help us to know where they're moving, and where they're, you know, where they're transient to, and where they're staying. But this is immediately upon their release.
Chief?
Yes.
If a sex offender indicates on here that, let's say that they put down a specific church, or a specific grocery store, or, I don't know, tool store, someplace like that, would you also notify those places with the bulletin that they were...
No, not necessarily. I mean, those, those bulletins are only on the SPNs. This interview may not be an SPN. It may, it's any offender that's released that's on supervision, we do face-to-face with. So, there's different levels. Those, those that are released as a special bulletin notice, high-profile case, maybe a likelihood to reoffend, just certain things, maybe didn't respond well to treatment, but their mandatory release came up, and so that would be coming out on a special bulletin. Then there's those that are released that are on supervision, and those that are released that may not be on supervision, their, their mandatory release date came.
And when you, when you say supervision, does that mean the...
Supervision by probation and parole agents, Department of Corrections. Right. And so, then we also do quarterly meetings with the Department of Corrections, the probation and parole people, the sex offender registry people, and we get updated databases of addresses that we can track, and we discuss, you know, what are we seeing? Have we noticed any offenders reoffending? Do we have some concerns about anyone in particular? Are we investigating some offenses that might, that we might be looking at, sex offenders as a suspect? It's just a general dialogue that we have quarterly with the Department of Corrections people. We maintain a database that's given to us quarterly by the Department of Corrections of all sex offenders, whether they're on active supervision or not, and we break those databases down into a district database, so the seven policing districts all have their own sex offender database that we track in SharePoint. And the, and the reason we put them by district is officers within that district are required then to do home visits and verification checks for address, and those are the compliance checks, a great tool for us to know, you know, whether our information is accurate, and where people, and that people are where they say they are living. So, it's a huge tool for us.
Are all seven districts, do you have sex offenders that you're checking on in all seven districts?
Yes, yes. Currently, there's about 222 sex offenders in the community. It's broken down by zip code. Some of those have Oshkosh addresses but don't live in the city, but that list is, give or take, you know, a couple dozen, is consistent with our database. We will only check on the ones that are in the city and maintain our vigilance on those.
Are those 200 all SPNs, or are they...
Sex offenders either on supervision or off supervision. Like I said, the SPNs, to give you kind of a ratio of offenders that are out there, nine SPNs we did last year. I, I don't know exactly the numbers that were originally SPN of that 222. You'd have to look at the whole database.
Did all 22 commit the crime in Winnebago County?
Most, probably not all, but most are released back to the county of their offense.
Is that like a...
That's a state law, yeah. And so, you can probably go to the next one.
One quick question. Now, we've covered just the city, now what about the town of Oklahoma, Black Wolf, town of Oshkosh?
That would be the sheriff's office or other jurisdictions to monitor.
All the same protocol that...
Mostly, they do, yeah, yeah. Along with that, the database for, for each district, we also have the ability to query who's an offender, who's not an offender, and it becomes more important later, as we talk about things, through the time system, which is where we'd run a warrant check on somebody, or, you know, like driver's license information. We run that through the time system, it'll come back and notify us if the person is a sex offender. So, that's another way of verifying our database. Also, in our records management system, in our master, master name index, when you query a person, it'll come back with a color coded, it's kind of a fuchsia color, which signifies that person is a sex offender in that database. So, we have double checks and triple checks on databases that we use to find people who, to find them where they say they are. If a person on supervision fails to comply with any of the rules of their supervision, or they give maybe false information on where they, where they say they're, they're living, probation and parole might consider them non-compliant or an abscondor, and then we will get notification of that, usually in the form of an apprehension request, and then we'll simply go where we know they're supposed to be and pick them up and incarcerate them for their non-compliance, or for their rule violation. So, that's another enforcement. Otherwise, we may get citizen complaints, where they see a suspicious person maybe acting, or some suspicious circumstances, and we would go to investigate that citizen complaint, and we may run across someone that is either known to us or not known to us, but we have means of verifying whether they're a sex offender or not, based on those querying capabilities that I talked about.
Chief, how long after a sex offender's not compliant, would you go and interrogate them, or locate them?
Well, usually, it's pretty timely when they notice that, through their investigation, that there's non-compliance, they'll issue those right away.
Is that also with the citizen complaints? If you get just one, you're, you're over there?
Well, we will answer any citizen complaint, so we'll go and investigate, and oftentimes, it's going to be a citizen complaint, or some new crime that's committed, that we would, you know, then run across an offender besides our very proactive checks that we do. And so, those next two would be either an officer observation, knowing that an offender has certain rules, and, and it's known to the officer that, that violator is violating a specific rule known, and we would take action then, or we may be investigating a new complaint of a crime that was committed, and it happened to be, whether it was a sex offense or a non-sex-related offense, it's a sex offender that's, that's committing it. We would know that through either officer knowledge, based on their knowledge of the district database, the knowledge of the complete database, or these other records capabilities that we can check. The fact that we've got records that are accurate is key to our success in being able to track our offenders. And then we have certain incidents that will occur, and this is the importance of a good database, is certain incidents might occur, like we may have a missing child, and we have those fairly frequently, and depending on the circumstances of that missing child, sometimes they're just late, they took a different route to school, they weren't, where mom or dad said they were going to be picking them up, and we get a report of a missing child. Usually, we can backtrack it to a friend or something. But what we'll do in a case that kind of raises the suspicion of something being more to this missing child, we will go to the sex offenders, the known sex offenders and their addresses, and do a proactive check on them, and a search of their house to make sure that that child isn't there. Another example of why a good database helps us to do that. With that, we've, we're just starting a CART team, a Child Abduction Response Team in this county. Sometime next month, I'll be bringing forward an MOU to the council for approval of the agreement, that, that allows us, in a multi-jurisdiction, multi-jurisdictional team, law enforcement from all the agencies in the county, the DA's office, the sex offender registry people, probation and parole, school system, counselors, Reach Counseling, everyone that might be concerned with sexual assault victimization, or missing kids, is part of this CART team. And it's, it's very manpower-intensive when we have a missing child, that with certain criteria, that we activate this team, which rolls out incident command, searching capabilities, interviewing, it's pretty comprehensive. And that will help us investigate incidents that involve a missing child, that we think on abduction, or that the child is in danger, because the first critical few minutes of that investigation is very important. We do holiday visits with certain offenders that, particularly those that are, that are off supervision, because most of the rules that the probation and parole have on them as far as supervision and GPS monitoring and those things would, would help anyway, any, any day of the week, of the week. But we will do holiday visits mostly on Halloween, just to, because the nature of kids might be coming to the door where they live, so we will do checks to make sure that, you know, that they're following their rules and not, you know, up to no good, or have plans in place to jeopardize safety with those that might come, be coming to their house. So, we'll, we'll team up with probation and parole agents, sex offender registry people, and we'll team them, pair them up with officers, and they'll, they'll go to the known addresses in our database and do, do checks on the offenders. We also conduct very proactive investigations, they're called ICAC investigations, Internet Crimes Against Children, and we do these fairly frequency, frequently. There's methods, and I'm not going to get into a lot of detail about how we do those. We just had a very high-profile case of, of an individual in another community that was initiated by our officer, connecting with someone intent on molesting a child. And we've got training and certification and certain tactics that we use to identify those kinds of offenders. And so, we're growing in our ability to do those kinds of investigations and do that proactively. Some of it is based on referrals, too, but some of us is just based on, that's the chatter that's on the internet, and we have the ability, or the time at the moment, to, to pick up on it. And then our outreach activities that we do, crime prevention, training, personal safety, outreach activities, the CICOV is going to allow us, the Command and Community Outreach Vehicle is going to allow us to get into neighborhoods and deliver. We've got all sorts of brochures and information that we can educate the community on, on the whole issue of sex offenders, and how to, how to personally protect yourself, and a lot of what we're talking about, what we do as an organization. And a couple of that, all those things, with the fact that every day in roll call, as officers are getting together to go out in the street, they talk about, you know, what they know is going on in their district, things that have happened in the past 24 hours, anything sex offender-related, they would be talking about it, to share information internally, so that there's just an increase in knowledge internally as to what we need to be paying attention to.
You started your discussion here, what you're doing now, with the fact, I think, what we do is as effective as it can be in that. So, to get to the bottom line of all this, what about reoffenders? How many cases of reoffending do we have? And how do we compare with other cities, and how has that changed over time? That'd be one question. You're a data guy, you always have numbers. And the second is, number of non-compliance claims that you do in a year to find out?
Yeah.
Because the objective is to eliminate non-compliance, and the objective is to eliminate reoffenders. So, how successful are we?
That's right.
How do you measure that?
You're right, I'm a data guy. I don't have a lot of data for, as a, as a, of the things that you're asking. I've got some general data. I reach out to Department of Corrections for a lot of that, and to my surprise, a lot of that immediately isn't tracked. There's so many variables when it comes to that. But let me tell you what I do know.
We track it within the city.
Of the nine SPNs that were released last year, none of them have reoffended. Generally, when we talk about recidivism, recidivism is committing new crimes, like the crimes you were originally incarcerated for, four to six years after release. So, it's probably early on, on those nine. We don't see a lot of recidivism of our SPNs. They're so heavily tracked and monitored, we just don't see it. Of those nine, one was cited for speeding, but no other offenses. Generally, what we see is about 20 to 25 rule violations a year of the offenders that are out in the community, meaning non-compliant, they, they weren't timely with their notification to probation and parole of an address change, or, there's a whole multitude of rules. I've got a sample of what the rules are typically for sex offenders, and so it might be a rule violation there. So, there are about 20 to 25 violations per year, and that's countywide. There's about 400 sex offenders in the county, about 222 or so in the city. And so, we don't see a lot of reoffending, or a lot of those non-compliant comes out. We may see the offenders committing other kinds of offenses, rule violations mostly, traffic violations, those kinds of things. Not a high frequency of recidivism on sex offenses. Nationally, I know that the recidivism rate for sex offenders are about, is about 14%, much lower than the non-sexual offending population. That's much higher. So, I don't think we're any different. It's difficult. We don't specifically track that. We let that to the Department of Corrections people to track that recidivism, but it's not a, I don't, I don't have any reason to believe Oshkosh is any different than what the state or national averages.
Past standard operating procedure was, when there was law enforcement contact with anybody that's on probation, parole, or what I used to call paper. You contact the probation agent, right, and kind of give them a FYI of what's going on, and they can actually incarcerate?
We absolutely do, and they may...
Up to three days, based on information the officer gives on either an existing crime, new crime, or a rules violation. So, they have an opportunity to incarcerate them, where we, where our old golf officers can't do that.
That's right. And that's generally where we see that, that kind of offenses, that they're, it's a rule violation. We are in constant communication with probation and parole. We still call it on paper. It's not unusual for an officer, right during a vehicle stop, if it comes back with a hit that the person's on the sex offender registry, that they're on the phone with the DOC people right on the vehicle stop, saying, hey, I've got this person, you know, is he violating any kind of rules? And, you know, that stop may end then in incarceration because of a rule violation right there. So, that's generally where we see reincarceration on, on the sex offenders. So that's generally where we see reincarceration on the sex offenders. So I think that's.
We'll transition to the kind of next thing on the agenda, as to what the options are for various ordinances. When we're talking about the options, we need to go back to your authority to regulate, regulate, protect the health, safety, and welfare. Public safety considerations. When you're regulating and looking at ordinances, these are just some things that we'd like you to keep in mind, both from a public safety aspect and also from a legal aspect.
Yeah, so there are some concerns if things change. Again, I want to emphasize, I think the things that we're doing are best practices. And they can be very manpower-intensive. And we try and balance our time. The whole premise of our team policing is using our uncommitted time to do these very proactive things. So the more we start tinkering with or changing the dynamics of the best practices that we do, the more impact it could have on our resources, and could make things more difficult for us requiring actually additional staffing or changing priorities to be able to accomplish that. So that's the additional resources in a very time-consuming kind of endeavor now to do that. But, you know, we think it's important to do it. Sometimes, the practicality of an ordinance enforcement has less of an impact than what we already have the tools to do at a state level. So we will always look at the hierarchy of offenses when we're dealing with somebody that's violated the law, committed a crime, or whatever the case may be. There's more of an impact to that immediately if we have the ability to incarcerate them, based on whatever it is we're dealing with. An ordinance would simply be a summons and release. There really isn't a lot of teeth to it or bite to it. So we, you know, the practicality of ordinance-level enforcement is sometimes the impact isn't Nationally, the empirical research shows that the more you restrict where offenders can go by ordinance, the more difficult it becomes for us to implement these best practices and track them. And that the consequences of that is increased homelessness, you know, actually, the reverse of, you think you're increasing public safety, you're actually decreasing it, because you take away their stability, their ability to get employment, their support network in the community by displacing them somewhere else. It actually enhances crimes and the ability to commit crimes, and might lead to people going underground and then failing to report. So now we don't know where they're staying, failing to keep notification with their probation agent, maybe giving false information to them, or just disappearing. They're off the grid, they're underground, we have no idea where to go. So if we have an offense where there's a missing kid, or we're investigating a sexual assault, some of the tools that we use that are best practices, like GPS monitoring and those things, may be not even a tool that we can use, because we have no idea where these people are. And again, one of the consequences of residency restrictions is increased homelessness. Right now, we know of the sex offenders that are out there, that there's one homeless that we know is homeless, has no address, no one will rent to him, he's got no stable place to go to. So we know the places that he's hanging out. We have the potential, and we're meeting on this one on Wednesday. Depending on the type of notification that we do, that might be another one that ends up homeless. And I feel, even though they are homeless, they're still on our radar. I would hate to see where we create a situation where the offenders go more underground because of the restrictions placed on them, that we lose track of where they are, and it increases the homeless population.
Just some legal considerations. Whenever you're doing ordinances, you have to make sure that your legislation has to rationally advance a legitimate government interest. We want to watch that any legislation isn't overly broad or overreaching, particularly with sex offenders. Some of them have been intact on the grounds that the intent was to provide further punishment, which, going back to the first one, would not be a legitimate governmental interest. They've already been punished for the crimes. So it's, to the extent that legislation would be to further punish, to shun, or for other non-legitimate purposes, those wouldn't be legitimate. We want to watch our procedural challenges, both to how an ordinance is adopted, and then depending on what kind of structure you would place to an ordinance. For example, if you do a residency ordinance and have a provision for a waiver or a hearing board, you want to make sure that all the procedures are properly set up, so that doesn't create a problem for you. Every ordinance is subject to that arbitrary and capricious standard. Preemption by state law, Wisconsin has had a couple of cases where they say, you know, regulation of sex offenders is a matter of statewide concern, but it's not regulated to the level at the state where it's been preempted by state law. So while I listed that up there, that's something you generally are concerned about. In this case, we do have some court cases that do say cities can regulate in that area. And then takings, typically in the sex offender case, you see that where, excuse me, you have a residency restriction, and someone that is already in place would be forced to move. Most ordinances address that issue by simply grandfathering. If you're already living within an area that's defined as being too close to school, you're not required to move, but you cannot then relocate to another area that would be prohibited. So again, depending on what kind of an ordinance you'd be looking at, these, one or more of these may or may not apply, and along with the things Scott talked about. It's just some things that to kind of have in the back of your head as we go through the rest of the slides.
I'll do the next few slides in a break, because I know you're going to have a few more coming down. What we're doing for this evening's presentation is we want to identify direct legislation, things that are specifically related to sex offender ordinances, and show you what research we've done and what we've uncovered. There's really four general areas. Residency ordinances are by far the most common ones, and we'll probably spend the most time on that. There's also loitering ordinances. There's a difference between residency and the loitering. Residency is where the person lives, loitering is where that person may hang out, for lack of a better term. Domicile ordinances, similar to residency, but a little different twist on that. And then holiday restrictions, similar to what the chief had talked about earlier, with already being done through the Police Department and Department of Corrections. But that's another common one in those four categories. And then indirect legislation, we've talked about this before, zoning and other land-use regulations are not geared towards the individual, but they're more geared towards the land use. And that's a little different, but we consider that indirect legislation, because you're not going after or specifically identifying those sex offenders specifically. And then other considerations, we weren't sure exactly how to say it, but intangibles when you're considering an ordinance, because these are the things I think that council probably gets approached the most on. You know, certainly, it's the sense of security. And part of the reason of having the chief talk about what we're currently doing is we want to assure people that the Police Department is already taking this very seriously. And regardless of what the council ultimately does, we want to make sure that people, we do respect their sense and need for security. Property values are an issue. It's an issue that's been, you know, talked about pretty regularly, and that's an issue that is legitimate, intangible, but it's out there. And then just real and perceived threats. And that's part of the enforcement part, was just to give both the council as well as the general public an idea of what we're specifically doing. Certainly, people are going to feel uncomfortable if they're notified that a sex offender's in their neighborhood. We want to separate the real issues then versus what can be perceived as a problem, but it's nothing more than a perception. With that.
Let me just say something about the property values. As a Realtor, you know, the people in our industry feel that it renders the adjacent properties unsalable. However, that condition could change overnight if the house next door is sold and a member of the family is a sex offender. So I think one thing we have to do is get, talk to the real estate community to help them overcome this perception. But it does render the properties very hard to sell, if not impossible. By license law, a Realtor, if asked, is there a sex offender next door? By license law, we can't answer the question. All we can do is direct them to the state website. We can't even tell, if the question is asked, are there kids in the neighborhood? We can't answer that by license law. We just have to say, drive around the neighborhood. If you see Big Wheels, tells you one thing. If you see Walkers, tells you another thing. So our hands are really tied, but I think we've got to do more of an outreach with the real estate community, so they have got the tools. Explain to people that it's more perception than reality.
Does the Realtors Association, either statewide or regionally, do any of that kind of education?
Nothing is done, no, nothing is done. It's.
In terms of sex offender regulations, they are directed at a class of persons. And as Lynn mentioned earlier, they must address threats to public safety and welfare. That's what the purpose of a sex offender regulation would be. So the first one is residency ordinances, and I'm going to have Lynn get into that.
Residency ordinances are based on what the courts have called common sense. It's a proximity restriction, and common sense tends to tell you that if you have, you would keep sex offenders away from places where kids might congregate. Scott will tell you that the statistics may not bear that common sense out, but that's kind of the basis for them, is that, you know, when we look at it, you would think, if you want to keep kids safe, you keep sex offenders away from those areas. So what they do is they typically set up a location or geographic proximity around certain places. Previously, it sent out, back in November or December, a compilation of Wisconsin, sample Wisconsin ordinances. Typically, in Wisconsin, the residency restrictions range from about 500 to 2,500 feet. When you look at that, one of the things you want to look at is how much of the municipality is going to be restricted. Obviously, the 2,500-foot restriction is going to be, is going to restrict a lot more of a city or a village than a 500-foot restriction. But it also depends on how you define the areas that you're going to be restricted from. Another thing that you want to consider would be, who's going to be regulated? Is the ordinance going to regulate the offenders, the property owners, a landlord who might be renting to these people, real estate agents, Department of Corrections personnel? Who exactly are you going to target that ordinance on, and what are you going to tell them they can or can't do?
Probably regulated.
Types of offenders that are covered, that's going to vary also between those ordinances. Some of them cover any sex offender. A lot of them covers sex offenders who have committed offenses against children, because again, you're looking at safety primarily with this. And so the focus tends to be on children. DOC-placed or non-DOC-placed offenders, or some of them are just limited to those special bulletin notifications. Those offenders that are probably the most likely to re-offend or cause the most concern to law enforcement.
I think, Scott, from your standpoint, those are the ones that we are most concerned with. Anybody on SB, anybody who's gotten released on an SBN, those are the ones that we genuinely are concerned about.
Right. Because of the level of their offense and the nature of their past offenses, kind of puts them at higher risk, those are also the most monitored. There are not only law enforcement, but very heavy, tight controls by probation and parole, and as well as the community notifications that go off. So they're the most watched, probably, but the most of concern to law enforcement.
Continuing with residency ordinances, the definition of these protected areas varies a lot between the local ordinances. Typically, it's going to fall into four categories when you look at it. It's going to be schools, parks, or sports facilities. Some of them name particular ones by name, or that type of thing, but it would be parks and sports facilities generally, child-based facilities, daycares, boys and girls clubs, and foster group homes. Those are kind of the four general categories that you're going to typically see as a defined protected area under ordinances. Just to give you an example, we did include two maps. Again, the range kind of goes from the 500 to 2,500. We did 500 and 2,000, just so you can kind of see how in the city of Oshkosh that would lay. And you really can't read that, really tiny print on the bottom at all. I had him do basically all four of those categories, the schools, parks, daycare centers, and like registered foster group homes. So that's what this map is based on.
Well, that says if there's a daycare center, a dot's put in the middle by the daycare center, and then a 500-foot circle radius. So it's 1,000 feet, you know, on either side, from side to side. So that, everything from that point is there, so.
The yellow is the city of Oshkosh, and the red would be those areas then, that would fall within that 500-foot.
Where do churches come into play that have some of these classes? Is that considered a school, or?
It depends on how you define it in the ordinance. Some ordinances did include churches, and then there were some that included churches, but then said, but there's an exception if the offender's going to church. So it really varies.
There's a lot of eyes to dot, is that's really the point. But going back to that, Chief, you could, most sex offenders that have involved minors already have restrictions on distances from schools, playgrounds.
A lot of them will have rules.
Already have that as part of their rules, right?
And they'll have GPS monitoring if they're on supervision, that will restrict them from going certain places. Some of the technologies, even where they're heading beyond their boundaries, the thing talks at them and says, you know, turn around and leave, you're entering a prohibited zone.
So the type of offense already restricts them to where they can live based on their, upon release of their rules and regulations and everything, like no alcohol, no contact with law enforcement, so far away from schools, parks. Those are all regulations that the state puts on them.
There will be some of those, not a lot of, you know, restricting where they live kind of restriction, but who they may have in contact. By state law, they can't, with certain types of sex offenses, they can't work with or be around anyone under the age of 16, say, as an example. So, I mean, there are certain restrictions, but.
And law enforcement knows that upfront in most cases.
We'll know what the rules are, right? Yeah.
For the contrast, here's the 2,000-foot buffer map. Again, started with the same parameters and the same basis, just extended that zone out from 500 to 2,000 feet.
You can see, and we didn't go much beyond that, because when you go to 2,000 feet, you see it covers most of the city, and the only exceptions are really.
Airport.
A lot of industrial areas. I mean, there's a handful of residential, take a look at some residential along the south part of the city, along the lake, a little bit just outside the city, but that's, it kind of gives you a pretty good idea. Covers most of the city. I mean, when you add those four schools, parks, child-based facilities, foster group homes, everything north of the river up until the industrial parks would effectively be prohibited. So going to 2,500 wasn't going to get you any greater pink area on this map.
One of the things with residency ordinances that, if you're looking at that, you would want to consider is what exceptions would be allowed. Most of the residency ordinances, I would say, probably included at least some exceptions. Probably the most typical ones are the ones I included up. The grandfathering, again, that addresses, that takings issue sort of protects us from that type of challenge. that type of challenge. Most of them contain the facility is open after the person has established residency. So if a person is living somewhere and a daycare would move in next door to them and they're already there, they would not have to move. Some of the ordinances had exceptions if it's also the primary residence of a immediate family member. So the person's being released and they're moving back in with a parent or a sibling or spouse or someone, you know, in close, close relationship. A number of them accepted minors, again, probably the same thing because they're moving home to parents, less opportunity for them to choose where they're going to live. Persons with, in guardianship, so you may have a person who was a sex offender who's under a guardianship, and they would be accepted under a number of the ordinances. The person's in a facility, so if you happen to have a facility that's located near a school or near, within one of these zones, and they have to be in the facility, that's a typical exception because they're required to be in the facility. And some of them that have waivers, if the person was previously granted a waiver, they don't run them through the process again. So those were just some of the typical exceptions. It would be something that you'd want to discuss if you were going to go down this road and figure out what, if any, exceptions you might want to consider and allow. I mentioned already the appeals or waiver process. You'd want to consider whether you're going to have an appeals or waiver process. Not every ordinance does have it. Some reasons you might want to consider it, it does allow you to deal with those special instances where strict application of the ordinance might seem too harsh. It might not seem fair. Or, you know, you might have some exceptions, this doesn't quite fit exactly under an exception, or you don't have exceptions, and this is a way for you to grant exceptions to it. It might make it a little less likely that your ordinance may get challenged because people might feel that at least they had a fair shake. That may or may not be true, but it might be. If you are challenged, it might make it less likely that the challenge is successful because it may be, the argument against, we were not arbitrary and capricious, we did allow for this, we did give, we do give people their say. So that's just some reasons you may want to consider it. If you do consider it, creates another whole bunch of questions for you about who's going to do those reviews and what standards are they going to apply? For example, one of, is it Green Bay or one of the suburbs? That does a independent board that does these appeals, and they listen to people and they have standards that they apply. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be the council, but you have to kind of figure out if you're going to have an appeals or waiver board, who are those people going to be? And then they're going to want to know what standards you want them to apply, so. For residency ordinances, Scott can cover how we would enforce those from a police perspective.
Yeah, a lot of them we already talked about, but on the very front end, when that notification of release of the offender from incarceration comes out, that would be an opportunity for the Department of Corrections to... One of the myths is that the Department of Corrections places these people in homes when most of the time, the offenders are out searching for their own places of residence, and they may be approved or not approved based on Department of Corrections and consultation with discussions we have with the court team. So if the person is being released and there's a residency ordinance in place, they would simply match the address of that offender residence or where they want to go to what the ordinance says to see if it's within that distance or not. So that would be the front-end enforcement of that. We would also uncover whether they're violating that when we do our face-to-face for those that are released on supervision or SBNs. Other than that, those are kind of the front-end kind of checks. It would be really based probably mostly on citizen complaints and our compliance checks to verify it. Citizen complaint, we're investigating a new offense or some kind of incident, and we would come across a sex offender, and we would learn of an address, and we would do a verification related to the ordinance based on that. Our district compliance checks would be, again, doing address verifications to see whether or not they're living in an area that's restricted. The difficulties with enforcing this would be, you know, boundaries, kind of confirming those boundaries as to where they're living. It may be obvious in some cases, it may be not so obvious in other cases, whether it is actually within the boundaries. In the 2,000-feet one where there's only limited places, that would be much easier than a 500-foot zone.
Some of the issues are if the property, if, let's say, the 500-foot boundary crossed into a corner of a lot, does that mean that the person can't live there on that lot? Or can they live there because it doesn't cover the building itself? It's, you're really splitting hairs, and you want to make sure that you have all those identified so that you can withstand legal challenges because we don't want to have to chase these things in court if it comes down to that hair-splitting issue.
So, one question that might be for Lynn. On a residency ordinance, does it have to include all sex offenders, or could you say, we just want to regulate the SBNs?
You can choose, and that is...
Because I mean, there's, I mean, like you said, you go on that residency, there's threes and fours who have very little supervision, very little restrictions.
Yep.
You know, it's really focusing maybe on those that you're concerned that, you know, you'd rather, you don't know your neighbor as a sex offender until you go to registry, but if he was a Level 1, you probably would because of much more police contact or probation parole coming, or bracelet, or whatever it might be.
Going back to our discussion from the beginning, that's one of the things with that overbreadth, and, you know, if the ordinance is overly broad, that's something that you might want to consider is, you know, if it's someone, sex offenders is a broad category, and so, you know, do you really want to hit a Romeo and Juliet kind of sex offender? Or, you know, do you want to focus on the special bulletin notification offenders or, you know, or them plus some other class? So that's, you know, certainly an option you want to look at.
When you mentioned Romeo and Juliet offenders, what percentage of the total is that?
It's difficult, it's really difficult to determine that. There's a lot of variables that really gets to the next one is, there's a myth that all sex offenders are the same. There are so many varieties of types of offenses and types of offenders that you really can't treat them all the same. And the Romeo and Juliet type, those often are not even prosecuted because of the sensitivity of consent, not consent, and age, and all those kinds of things. So with any kind of decision, you have to think in terms of not necessarily treating all sex offenders the same because they're not the same. And some are more likely to reoffend than others, and weeding those out is very difficult to do. So if a certain ordinance applies to certain types of offenders, weeding out that offense and its applicability to the ordinance would be very difficult for law enforcement to do on a case-by-case basis without access to some really good information about the types of offense, which would require us to do some digging with probation and parole in order to get that. That might not be immediately available to us at that moment, at the moment that we're dealing with an individual. And again, the practical application of the ordinance, we're going to take a hierarchy. There are already a lot of state laws that give us tools to deal with offenders, sex offenders that are offending. And some might be contrary. For instance, there is a law that was just passed that allows sex offenders to be on school property. They just need to notify the school that they're there. And so proximity ordinances or residency ordinances might be in conflict with what's in state law already. So that makes things very difficult sometimes to enforce. And the practical application of, so they're violating, we give them an ordinance violation, a summons, which is basically a site and release. What is the teeth to that from a preventative perspective? We would much rather deal with the state laws and the ability to follow the consequences of state law, which oftentimes results in arrest and incarceration, or a rule violation that is known to us with our double-checking with the probation and parole that would allow us to incarcerate the person, which would be much more preventative at the moment.
As a practical matter, our office would probably not encourage them to even issue ordinance summons for just that reason. They're not effective. More likely, we would file a nuisance action and seek an injunction for that person, from the court, to have that person move. If you don't have, or even if you do have a waiver or an appeals process, this is kind of another level to that because the court may say, yes, we'll grant your injunction, or no, city, you're being too restrictive, your ordinance is too vague, too whatever, and that's where that, those kind of challenges could arise in response to that nuisance action. But that's more likely what we would do. We would not go through an ordinance and summons.
Have you had that? Have you had any nuisance actions?
We file nuisance actions quite frequently, not on sex offenders because we don't have an ordinance. Now, we file more on property condition now is, tends to be the nuisance actions we file, but it would be, it would be similar. It would be a nuisance action filed in civil court. Scott did his picture, it's going to add to his burden. It would add to the burden in our office as well. So we would have to look at that, whether we can handle those in-house or not. It would depend on how many we had and what gets involved with it. If there was a nuisance action filed, if the person, if the injunction was issued, the person failed to move, then there would be monetary penalties, and that would be through the court in terms of violation of that injunction. And it's, none of those would be criminal violations, though.
Let me go back to Scott's issue. If Scott can use some other rule that will legitimately believes this person's done something wrong, we're going to pursue that to get him reincarcerated rather than chasing him for an ordinance violation because an ordinance violation is going to be a fine, and that'll be...
Site and release.
We go for the best teeth we can when we're doing this.
And when you mentioned a fine, a monetary penalty, I know a lot of citizens will say, oh, there's another revenue generator for the city, but we're not talking about expenses that are high enough or a quantity of offenses that are high enough to really justify the cost of the time of the labor of your departments to cover that. I mean, it's really, it could be a net loss in terms of real dollars.
Very likely could be a net loss, and you also have to try to collect it. Going on, loitering ordinances, these, loitering ordinances deal with some of the limitations of a residency ordinance, as Mark had indicated before. The residency ordinance is going to regulate where the person lives. Loitering is going to regulate where they hang out, where they're present. A person would not necessarily violate a residency ordinance by living more than, we'll use the 500 feet. I can live more than 500 feet from the school, but walk over and hang out at the school all day. So this would address that issue. Loitering near schools or parks, they typically use the same types of locations that we talked about with the residency requirement. Schools, parks, and sports facilities, child-based facilities, daycares, that kind of thing, foster group homes.
The map would show where you couldn't hang out, not where you could live. You could live at Irving and Hazel, under a loitering ordinance, you just can't cross the street and hang out in Menominee Park, or go down the street and hang out by Webster-Stanley School. So it's just, it's just the logic shifts when you're doing a loitering ordinance.
And there's some basis for it. Statistically, there's some evidence that offenders tend to not offend near their homes with the exception being those who know their victims not by geographic proximity, but by social proximity. The, if, otherwise, with the exception of those, the ones who know them by social proximity, the tendency for the other violators is that they tend not to violate near their home. They would go farther away, and I think Scott can probably address that.
Anonymity is the key, yeah. There is no research that shows that proximity or residential ordinances work because offenders do not offend by their home, they don't offend near parks. There's no empirical data that says that those proximities to those locations have any increased recidivism. In fact, 93% of the victims knew their offender and most likely their family members or acquaintances, and those assaults would have occurred in those locations where they're babysitting or where they're, you know, with their girlfriend's kids or that kind of thing, and not around their home, their own home or near a park or school.
On that sobering comment, keep going.
So how would we enforce it? A lot is similar to the residency restriction. It would mostly be probably citizen complaint-based, someone calling a suspicious person hanging around a park or around a school, and then an officer would respond and check out that individual and verify their status as a sex offender through the means that we do. Or officers on observation and patrol, knowing their districts, knowing the sex offenders that are in there and the rules. If they observe a violation, they could take some action. Again, the boundaries and the proximity could probably even be more difficult in defining the boundaries in a proximity, because where is the location of the spot that you start measuring from? You know, I mean, officer's going to be required to measure 500 feet from a point in a park or 2,500 feet from a point in a park to determine, you know, if the person actually violated the ordinance or not, could make it very difficult to confirm that. Again, we talked about the practical application of an ordinance summons when we would use the hierarchy. With the things that we already know based on the tools, the state law, and the rule violation, we would hook the person for a violation on a rule violation or state law so that they could be incarcerated, and that would prevent any crimes from being committed that way. Is much more effective than a site and release.
I would say, I think typically on the loitering ordinance, you see that smaller end of the location, typically the ones that I remember looking at were more in the 100 to 500-foot, not necessarily going up to the 2,500 feet. But, and again, if, when you're thinking about the type of ordinance, I think that makes sense. You want to keep them away, but it's not necessarily any more effective to keep them 200 feet than 100 feet from the park edge. So I think typically those ordinances have a smaller boundary. Original domicile ordinances, I think that gets back to one of the questions that Council Member Allison Osby asked about returning to the jurisdiction of your, that, your last offense. You'll see ordinances in some municipalities, this is not quite as common, but that restrict and say, we're only going to take offenders that resided in our jurisdiction at the time of their last offense, so no foreign sex offenders. Enforcement, I think, would be similar to residency and loitering ordinances from Scott's aspect.
Just out of curiosity, again, in terms of... Gosh, gosh, sometimes there's a perception, since we have a prison here, that a lot of people get released here because their families move here while they're incarcerated. Is that a, we know that that's fact or not, or do most of the people that have offended elsewhere who were incarcerated up here go back to their home? How many foreign offenders do we, I mean, not foreign, foreign...
They are just air quotes.
You hear that from time to time.
I got to be careful there, but you used the word there. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get at, how big an issue is having sex offenders in Oshkosh who were, who did not commit offenses in Oshkosh?
I think there's no question that families sometimes move up here of those that are incarcerated. It's more anecdotal than it is factual. I don't think it is true that those families tend to be the offenders. In fact, in a discussion that I had at one point, one of the command people within the prison did an actual study, a research study of crimes that were committed related to families of the population, and there was no evidence that that was the fact. No, I haven't seen the study, I'm just going based on what he told me. on what he told me. But he actually did a study as part of a project. And, you know, so you hear people making those assumptions, but I've seen nothing that actually proves that.
The final type of ordinance that you're typically going to see is the holiday restrictions. Most typically, they follow the same restrictions that the Department of Corrections puts on individuals. They can't give out Halloween candy. They can't wear Santa suits and around Christmas time. No Easter bunny costumes around Easter. There, you could potentially put other restrictions on as well. Typically, those are the ones you see, and those are exactly mirroring the DOC restrictions. And for enforcement of those?
Yeah. So, not to belabor that. We talked about it before. We do visits, particularly on Halloween for the holidays. The probation and parole rules that are established with each offender, if they're on supervision, further guides that. If they're on GPS monitoring, that also is helpful to restrict what they can do during the holidays or where they can go. Our proactive policing, where the officers are aware of where the offenders are. We do step up kind of that awareness and that vigilance during holidays. And again, how the violations would be handled would be a rule violation, arrest and incarcerate, as opposed to the ineffectiveness of an ordinance and what impact that would have. We have in the past uncovered rule violations during our Halloween visits, and we were able to incarcerate some people, which basically eliminated any problem during that holiday. Whereas enforcing that from an ordinance perspective wouldn't have had that same impact.
The previous slides show the ways that cities directly address sex offenders. There are other things that cities can do that can help alleviate some of the issues and concerns related to these folks. But these tools can include some of your zoning ordinances. They're not directly directed at or directed towards sex offenders or really any class of people, but they can help address some of the issues that arise in addition, or some of the other concerns that are in the back of people's minds. Again, not for classes of people. Zoning, as you're all well aware, is regulated by state statute. It allows you to regulate features, locations, and uses of buildings, basically. And it's not for classes of people, and it can address impacts on property values, but there are some limitations to what you can do with it. Currently, we do have a couple of ordinances in the zoning ordinance that might have some impact on these types of folks. Household size limit for unrelated adults, we currently have a maximum of four per living unit. So, if you had four persons living in a particular dwelling unit that were unrelated, whether they're sex offenders or not sex offenders, DOC is looking to place a fifth individual in there who is a sex offender. They may not be able to reside there because of the zoning code. So, unless they would get a rooming house license, we do have a provision in the ordinance for rooming house licenses, but those are not, new rooming houses are not allowed within your R1 type of zoning. They're only permitted in multifamily and mixed-use districts. So, it's limited where those can be established. They are currently undergoing some zoning code updates, and whether some of the things that are going to end up being proposed in that zoning code may have some, some impact on these issues again as well. The advantages of zoning code updates are they treat everybody the same. You're not singling out a particular class of persons. It can help you control things like density. It can help control the other problems you see with density, parking, traffic, trash accumulation, those kind of things. And the disadvantages, it doesn't directly target the sex offenders. It doesn't directly affect that safety issue. You can have additional time and resources that are going to be required for enforcement. It's going to be complaint-based. Our inspections division would enforce it, and they would do it on a complaint-based enforcement. And you do have the potential for loss of rental income for landlords.
This indirectly controls the concentration of anybody.
Of any.
But you could include sex offenders in that group because if there's, if there's, the residency restriction says that in multifamily, you don't want any more than, let's say, three per unit, then you would enforce that. And some of these locations that have sex offenders, along with other members of the general public at these places, you could restrict that density. Now, it could be that there's three, if you had a maximum of three, you could have three sex offenders in there. A fourth person, whether they were a sex offender or not, would be prohibited by that zoning ordinance. So, it's not directed at the person. It's not like the fourth person's allowed in and one of the sex offenders has to leave because we can't specifically target an individual in a zoning ordinance violation. We would just be, by sheer numbers, we would distribute the concentration.
And we're working on that currently?
That's something that we're working on, that we can indirectly address this issue by doing those types of things. And the downside to that, as Lynn mentioned, the potential loss of rental income for landlords. You may have landlords come to you saying, if they view this as being for the purpose of addressing sex offenders, why are you hurting us in the name of addressing sex offender ordinances? Why don't you do something else? So, you'll get that. You'll get that pushback, which I think is, you probably know, anytime you do a restriction, you're going to get pushback from somebody saying, it's overly broad, and you're going to hurt me, and I don't rent to sex offenders, yet you're going to hurt me, that type of thing. So, I mean, I'm kind of stating the obvious, but at least you want it out there because that's the pushback you're going to get. That is the crux of our presentation. I got a handful of questions just before the meeting. Some things, we tried to cover everything, but, you know, obviously, this is a very broad, complicated subject. So, I know there were some questions from council members that, you know, we've got some time left that we had allotted. So, really, it's more keep it open. I hope that this covered most of what you were looking for. The idea that I asked staff to look at was try to be as broad in what's out there in the, in the world of regulation, so that you see the broadness, as well as the pros and cons with all of them. And I hope we, I hope we did that. And I think part of what Chief Groh was pointing out is, we're doing a lot already. If there's something more you want done, we're certainly open to discuss the practicalities of doing that type of thing.
One comment. This goes back to the first workshop we had. Was that a year and a half ago? We had a lot of the neighbors from Middle Village here. We had three people from the Department of Corrections out of Madison. We had Gordon Hinz here and Rick Gudex, obviously. And what I took away from this was that the people in Middle Village, which there are some boarding houses and so forth that have sex offenders, is they understood the need to have housing for them. Their complaint was, and I think we've heard that other parts of this, the older parts of the city, why are there so many in one neighborhood? And I think that might be why we're here tonight, is we know there's a need for them. I think the citizens understand the need. How do we, for lack of a better term, spread the wealth throughout the community?
I can just address some of that. If you remember, the focus of a lot of that conversation was a specific address in the 600 block of Central. And DOC at that time made a commitment that they were going to, that they were going to self-regulate that and not place more than what they said would be four in there. Currently, there is one sex offender living there who is off supervision. We're aware of the offender. We monitor that. There's currently one. So, they've kept up that end of their commitment that night. I think it's really determined by who will rent to them as to where you see them. Some of them go back to their families, and it's important for the reintegration and the success of the offender, which actually reduces recidivism, if they have stable residence, work, maybe close to transportation to get to their work, access to resources and support networks. There, that tends to reduce recidivism. And, you know, the places, the renters that are, I'm sorry, the landlords that are willing to rent to them seem to be congested in the areas that are very high in rental units to begin with. And that tends to be Central City, University area, you know, the downtown area that are very high rental locations, and landlords that are willing to rent to them because they understand that.
And low rents.
Affordable, affordable housing.
What makes it difficult, too? It all has to come back to clearly identifying a health problem, a safety problem, a welfare problem, just not a fear problem.
Exactly.
I'm not sure how the welfare word gets defined. That's the health and the safety. That's part of why I asked, do we have re-offending going on a lot, and is it increasing? Because the obvious is, we're not controlling it very well. We've got to control it better. But if the re-offending offenses, other kinds of offenses, and it kind of takes the safety part out of it, increasing, or we have to think about something with a goal of how whatever we do is going to lessen or increase the safety. I'm not, the concentration one's a tough one because it's kind of a fear, but it's not clear that that's a health problem, a welfare problem, or a safety problem. I don't know. I'm just, that's why it gets complicated. That's why, I think we all understand why there's some fear of it, but once we get past that, how do we deal with that?
I think there's, there's probably a benefit to a concentration. I don't mean a lot of people in one structure, just as there is for a recovering alcoholic or the drug addiction that if you're, in that case, if you're in a sober living environment and you've got a support group with you, and I think the same possibly is true with a sex offender, that you're living in a supportive community, that that's got to be helpful.
That certainly is true. And the transitional living facilities that our DOC own, they tend to report on each other sometimes. There's that natural support network because their offenders all live in the same, and they're not all sex offenders in the transitional living places. But DOC will also tell you that they tend to report rule violations on each other, just to hold themselves accountable. And that's the whole purpose of the transitional living facilities, is to try to reintegrate them. And for those that don't have residences to begin with, it's a place for them to go because the sex offenders are going to get out at some point. There's mandatory release, so they have to go somewhere. It's not a matter of, well, let's change the laws and incarcerate them longer. Just the opposite's happening. Sentences are being reduced. There's mandatory release, and they're getting out, and we have to deal with it. And the fact that we've got best practices in place, I think, I think we're doing a significant job and, and a good job of it, and a great partnership. And the fact that there isn't any compelling reason, even though I don't have a statistic, I don't think we're far off from the national statistic, and DOC probably can come up with those numbers. We just didn't get there. The fact that I don't think it's a problem, you know, I think, you know, should mean, should mean something. I don't see a compelling public safety reason to change the best practices that we have now.
I think we're focusing in the right direction with, with our good neighborhoods, our neighborhood associations. You know, having firsthand experience on the sex offender because I handled it for the Sheriff's Office for a while, I think it's being handled well here in the city. I think tightening up our zoning and our code issues, I think, will, will help. So, I think it's a combination, all those things working together versus maybe a specific ordinance that could actually hinder some of the things we're doing. You know, and we talk about the northeast side of Oshkosh or Central City is where a lot of those people congregate. Part of it is because of the cost of housing in that area, the homes in that area. So, as we continue to move forward with our bike control program, we get rid of some of the bited homes. As we get more neighborhood associations involved and they improve the quality of their neighborhoods, that's going to improve the quality of the housing in those neighborhoods, which will raise the rent. So, I think it was, it's a multi-faceted approach. And at this point, to put more, more ordinances or things that are harder to either enforce or control those folks with two people in the city attorney's office and the police department being hamstrung with the amount of officers, I think the outreach education is probably the other good piece that we could go out there and do and with the mobile command post.
I think what you're saying, Steve, I think we've got to really talk to the real Jersey.
Right. Yep. Educate.
I've talked to people in our office about, I said, we've got a meeting workshop coming up. And I said, what effect does this have on the, I don't know, I said, can't sell it. I think if they understood what we just did tonight, what we do have in place, I think is, I'm a tool to maybe disquiet their comms and people who get very jumpy very quick about it, that, hey, you're, it's, it's a lot of perception.
What type of sex offender is it that is living next door that won't sell the houses? A level one or two?
They hear, they hear the word.
Right. So, yeah. And so, you know, again, the ones that the chief talked about where they had the notifications, they're so restricted to what they can and can't do, they're not the ones that you've got to worry about. The threes and fours in most cases that are pretty, have no real rules and regulations, they can go about their normal lifestyle in most cases. Those are the ones that may, may be a felony or go to the next level.
I think the other thing is having the conversations and getting it out there. Like, I'm extremely pleased with your comment about the rooming house that was on there, which was the big issue. The fact that through conversation, at least, that was raised to the level where it should be raised to, it just wasn't raised to the level. So, I got to have those conversations if there are those kinds of fears, and it was handled. I mean, if there's, if we've gone from six to one, we've kind of dealt with that particular issue in a way without slamming it with a hammer, without banging it with a hammer. And so, if there are other kinds of, those kinds of issues out there, if we can try and educate people and have them raise their concerns and then talk about the concerns specifically, just fear of sex offenders.
The DOC did, the DOC did say they would work with us, and I wasn't aware that they had.
So, that's.
People in Middle Village know that.
If they're watching what's going on at the residence, they most likely do. I mean, that's something that we can share with them through our ongoing dialogue. And the one thing I would mention as it relates to the congestion is, I think sometimes people are looking at online databases that aren't accurate. There's, there's groups like homefacts.com, familywatch.com, even the Northwestern's database. Those are not accurate. And so, what we always tell people is go to the Department of Corrections Sex Offender Registry website to get the most updated and accurate information. Some of these other ones, it's old. They're not keeping up with the changes in the, in the registering and the address verifications that we do. And it's not accurate information. And so, I think sometimes people get all uptight about what they see on those databases that aren't accurate.
And I think we want to also be careful that just because Green Bay has an ordinance, other local communities, I think Eschwabnan has something. There's other ones. I don't know, Nina Manasha. But we don't, I don't think we want to say, just because they have them, we have to do something. I think, I think it's, it's a combination, as you said, it's education, it's, it's working with Department of Corrections. I think it's working with, you know, our neighborhood associations and just educating that the schools are all on board. I've had personal knowledge, worked with Reach Counseling, one of the better counseling organizations in this area of the state. So, I think it's a matter of all that and just, it's due to work.
And to follow up on your point, if those other municipalities, whatever type they might be, have less issues, have fewer issues, then we might look at ordinance.
Right.
But it's not clear that our issues are any greater than their issues at this point in time. You know, that's a question I was asking before. What are the results? And if the results aren't any different, then layering more ordinances doesn't make a lot of sense. On the other hand, if we had data that showed if where there were ordinances, the issues were less.
That would make sense. But when the opposite is true, the more you regulate it by ordinance, the adverse effect it has on crime and those kinds of things.
True. But do we even know, I mean, what, what other ordinances do those communities have? And are they working or are they not working? I mean, do we even know what they are? So, I see what you're saying, Councilor Herman, but on, on the flip side, too, what do they? So I see what you're saying, Councilor Herman, but on the flip side too, what do they have? And has it improved anything or has it not?
I think some, I think some of what you're talking about were just recently, recently enacted by their municipal officials and I think that's kind of what led to some of the public discussion that drove the first workshop and some of these discussions we're having. But, yeah, I don't know if there's enough time yet to tell with those. But, you know, along with that, I hear citizens in the community saying, well, if Fonnalak does it and Appleton does and Green Bay does it, then Oshkosh is going to become a Mecca for, and I don't think there's, probably isn't evidence to support that that would be the case either.
I will tell you that law enforcement in those communities that you mentioned have the same perspective that I do. And I don't think Oshkosh is any different than any of these other studies that have been done in other states, Colorado, Florida, Minnesota, Iowa, and not only by states but by private entities that have researched this. And the research shows that these ordinances don't work. It creates all sorts of problems. It inhibits some of the best practices that we have in place. And the documents that show what is the best ways to manage sex offenders are exactly those things that we talked about.
I think it's important, necessary to keep getting data and have data on this stuff. Reoffenders, numbers of complaints, do they go up, do they go down? How do we compare with other municipalities with respect to those relative to those that happen? So it's important to stay on top of it. As Sean said, you know, these may be new ordinances, so over time, we may find that there's some positives or they don't work as well as we're saying, so, but it's important to keep on top of the data.
These are the four general categories and there may be others, if anybody's aware of them, we're certainly happy to dig into them and see what kind of impact they have. But these are generally the four areas and you can see there's a lot of, you know, changes or clarifications you could do with each of them. And that's why we wanted to make sure that we covered as broad an area. I know there were questions about property values and things like that. Councilor Pansky had asked, you know, certainly, I want to make sure that we've covered all the bases that we can cover for you and if there's additional research, you've been very patient on having this workshop and hopefully this met your expectations, but this is something that society is going to continue to deal with. As the chief said, 93% of these offenses are by people knowing. Therefore, education is a huge part of that and to the degree we can play a part of that through community education, through the police department or through OCMS, those are the things that we want to make sure that we're on the front end of because it's the ones that we don't know have even happened yet that we have to concern ourselves more with even than the ones we do know about because it's only 7% of the crimes are committed by people that you don't know. But certainly, are those 7% legitimate? Those are the ones that are scary, but are the 93% preventable? Sadly, no, but they're, but they are a much narrower type of situation, even though they cover 93% of all the sex offender crimes.
Is there a program still in place in the school district to educate children, to talk to children about this? I remember, gosh, when I was a kid, somebody came in and talked about stranger danger and all that. Do they still have that program in place?
And stranger danger isn't taught as much because it is a myth. It supports exactly what the city manager said, that 93% of the victims know each other. So it's an element and a component, but it's not emphasized like it used to be as we learn more about what's actually happening with victimization. But our PSLOs do teach some things, our officers will go into the schools as well and the schools have good programs as well to talk about personal safety and internet safety and all those kinds of things, yeah.
And looking for signs of somebody who's been a victim.
Right.
Because they don't advertise it.
And I'm sure Reach Counseling has resources available to parents who'd like to talk to their children about this.
Absolutely, yep.
Other questions? Other comments? Where do we want to go? Does there need to go further at this point or stay on top of it or can see that we get a work back any year?
Do we have any idea when we're going to go further with this and invite more public comment?
I think that's up to council to decide. I think the, you know, the zoning code update, we're doing regardless because that's something that we want to address. It may have some indirect benefit to this discussion and we're going to continue to do that. And Mr. Davis is, that is on, you know, his goal is for this year. It was transitioning from last year to this year because it's very comprehensive, but that's going to be one we talk about. Is it going to be specifically about sex offenders? No, but will it have the benefit of sex offenders? Yes. It also, if the council wishes to do anything, you know, we can schedule this for a future meeting, obviously, it's a meeting tomorrow, that'll be, you know, too late to discuss it then, but, you know, reflect a little bit, we can put it back on an agenda for discussion. Hopefully, people watching this evening or coverage of this will get some discussion flowing. This is intended to be a dialogue that we can keep open as long as the council wants and, you know, we don't want to sweep this under the rug. This is a real problem in our society. It's just how do we address over and above what law enforcement is currently doing?
And I think if we were to decide not to necessarily go any further, it wouldn't be a situation of sweeping it under the rug. I think continuing with the proactive policing that our law enforcement is doing is obviously proven to be very effective so far and so that wouldn't necessarily be the case if we didn't go forward with this. I think the information presented tonight was just outstanding from a community perspective of using this as a resource for genuinely understanding some of the situations regarding sexual offenders and their residency in the city. There's a lot of reality and a lot of myth and that seems to perhaps be more the issue that law enforcement deals with is the myths versus reality that the public has sometimes about sexual offenders in the community.
I would think too, the new, the regional registration inspection program along with zoning should address a lot of this too, so.
I also think through Lynn's work with other city attorneys, the chief with other chiefs, as they talk to their counterparts that have ordinances in place, maybe they can pick up some information of whether they're, you know, what kind of issues are they having so that if we do hear from our citizens that they want us to move it forward to maybe an ordinance level, that we have some information from other communities to whether it's working, not working, creating enforcement issues, things that we could then, if we move forward somewhere down the line, that we can use, you know, best practices, the chief said, and what they're doing and best practice to other communities so that we don't have issues with our ordinance if we would go there in the future. Right now, I think we've got, myself, I wouldn't, I don't think we really need a residency ordinance right now. I think we're doing all we can to notify our citizens that may be affected by someone moving into the neighborhood. We are proactive with our neighborhood associations, the education piece is out there, so I think we're doing a lot. Our schools are part of it, our daycare centers are part of it, so I think right now, I wouldn't support an ordinance moving forward at this point.
I'm comfortable with what you have.
I am as well.
I just think there's always a little bit more room for education.
Sure.
You know, just people still do not know the facts versus the myths. It's our responsibility to do that.
I think, you know, this has been helpful too because as people come to us or write comments, we can get better responses now than I think we could before, quite frankly. I think, you know, I feel that way, been around doing this for a long time and feel better prepared to respond more directly to the backwards mission. Or if they come up with something that we haven't thought of, like, hey, wait a minute, this never came up.
Right. Or even if we hear from.
And to bring it up.
And we can continue the conversation.
Right.
I think the positive too, the Department of Corrections actually listened to us.
Yes.
Taken steps to help us or work with us, so that's.
I think they realize there was a concern in the community and they are community correction officers, so when there is an issue in the community, they've, over the years, have addressed, always have addressed those issues. Having known quite a few probation pro agents over my career, they're very concerned about that perception in the community and want to relieve the fears of the community and as the chief said, they're going to, you know, they're releasing them every day, they're coming out of the system and we have to deal with them.
Other comments or questions?
Nice chat. Excellent chat.
So we'll put it on the following council agenda just for reflective discussion. I guess that's a, and certainly, you know, the chief indicated he had nine SBN notices last year. We can certainly provide those to council so that you're aware when those take place. It'll kind of give you perspective on that.
Is that available to the public? Can anybody ask for that information?
Absolutely. We distribute them all over.
Just ask the police department or?
You can get there on our website. Anytime we do a release, it's on their website, it's released through the media. We make copies available at the front desk at the police department, we give them to the library and other public places, so they're readily available. All you have to do is ask, we can send it electronically to anybody. But that information is readily available off our website, right on the front page. Any sex offender that's been released on an SBN will have that. Much like you saw this release, it'll be exactly that. That's all.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thanks to all.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.